Public comment period. This is the opportunity for the planning commission to listen to the public, but not for dialogue. The commentators are allowed after three minutes to read out information related to this forum, not otherwise listed as an agenda item. Please note complaints should first be addressed to the appropriate city department and/or the city manager prior to directly addressing the planning committee. Do we have anybody who wishes to make a public comment? Yes.
Oh, it's up here. Pete, another one. Officer Leah, with the Oregon Beekeeper Association. And I know that you're going to consider...
Thank you.
Okay, I know you're going to consider BTP later, and that's an agenda item. But the thing is, once you do that, I'm not allowed to provide comments if you ask me. So right now, I want to suggest to you two things. We're strongly support what you're, I hope you're doing when you look at those. But there is one thing that should be changed in there. One, C dash two on page thirteen. Near the end of that paragraph two, it says, "Practice among hobby beekeepers." No place in the rules do you define hobby beekeepers, and no place is it otherwise used. And so if you're going to be consistent, but you should be to define hobby beekeepers. Are you going to page thirteen? You look kind of like...
But there's two thirteens really. Are you talking about the page number down here?
Yeah, the page number down here. Oh, page fifteen of sixteen.
Oh, okay.
All right. Okay. Let me back up.
Page fifteen of sixteen?
Yes.
Okay, and where is that saying?
C two.
C two.
At near the end of that sentence, "Among hobby beekeepers," you don't define hobby. And you don't, but you do find beekeepers. And in practice, hobby beekeepers have a narrow definition in BTP. So if you want to use the word hobby, you should use hobby slash urban or residential. Or take hobby altogether and just put residential. Now, I will tell you that this is not your fault. This came directly pretty much out of the League of Oregon Cities. And the League of Oregon Cities uses the word hobby, just like you do in here. Only one place without ever defining it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, next. Planning permission meeting minutes for December eleventh. Approval of minutes.
Can anyone speak? I think yes, somebody there.
Paul, you have another comment.
Oh, I have another comment.
Joe?
Yeah.
It's a little harder up there.
Mark right here?
Yeah. I don't know if there's some sense.
Hi, Joe Neely, also have a platform, WBT, also known as Westphalia Transparency. I'm up here to ask some, make some comments from two individuals who've asked me anonymously. One is directed to anyone on the committee. Will these houseless services be a hand up or more of a hand apple? And the second anonymous person asked me, directed towards Leslie. How often do you check your emails? And how often do you respond to your emails? That's just someone asking me anonymously. I let the council work with them. I'll close out.
Can you tell me the first word that you said? Did you say houseless? How often do you check your emails?
Often check their emails.
And will the houseless services be a hand up or a hand apple?
That is not an approval of the planning commission.
Okay, so I'll let them know about that. Yeah, I figured that they just asked me to convey that to you to make sure that, make sure you guys know that's all. Thank you so much. I'll close out.
Thanks.
Yep.
Any other comments?
Any other comments? Okay, so now we're back to our cutting. Commission meeting minutes for December eleventh. Right here.
I make motion that we approve the planning commission meeting minutes for December eleventh.
All in favor?
Aye.
We're moving on to all decisions. We view and recommendation for ordinance for residential beekeeping. So let's take it real quickly to how do you feel about removing hobby? Just and putting it in compliance with acceptable standards of practice among beekeepers in the state of Oregon. And just removing hobby from that. John?
Yeah, I had the, I had that circled as well. I'm going to ask why it would be considered a hobby when they're actually producing some sort of goods.
Yeah, they're doing a positive thing, so.
I agree that we should change the verbage from hobby to...
Let's just delete the word hobby. Yeah. It works if we just delete the word hobby.
I'm assuming the purpose of that is because it's supposed to be clear that it's not for commercial use. So I'm assuming that was put up, but it says in the code about residential use.
Right, so we covered that.
It takes care of that, so I think it's just for...
Right, so let's just delete the word hobby from then.
And I think we'll have to clarify that in our motion.
When we move it, when we move on, yeah, when we make our motion, yeah.
The other thing that I noticed down there too, it didn't say how many hives were allowed.
It was, it was talking about up to five. It was talking about five or more hives had to pay for a permit and they were charged so much per hive.
That's a lot of bees.
It's, it's almost totally unlikely that within town, there would have five supers. We could change it to two supers.
I think so, because we have an amount of chickens, right?
We can... Pardon?
I'm going to plug you in back.
Pardon?
Sometimes there's a split and sometimes you rescue a hive. So three possibly.
Three, I think three is, I kind of thought that's what we had talked about. Because I got some information about like test, wait, not testing.
Pardon?
Being able to observe the different hives and three with a maximum of three, I think was kind of...
Well, let's, let's just make it a maximum of three hives. So where would that, where was that in here? From here prior.
Section, section three line C.
Pardon?
Section three line C each.
Right. Okay. Well, that's saying for five or more colonies, it's ten dollars per. Let's just, we're not doing a registration fee. Yeah. And we're just doing a permit process. So the permit process will be for up to three hives. Yeah. So C would be permit.
So we would just need to take out that first sentence of C altogether?
Right.
And then there's no registration fee?
There's no registration fee, okay. Well, we still have to make it, there's no registration fee for APRA's consisting of less than five colonies.
Probably needs to be...
We need to, we need to limit to three hiding.
I think Kennedy is correct. There should be, so the city of Sheridan has a charter restriction that doesn't allow any new fees to be established.
Right.
And so as it stands, this would be a new fee and that we can't do that here. So there is no registration, I should say, there's no new fees from when that charter provision was put into place, which is like 2008 or something.
We just, we need to put in that we're limiting it to no more than, so change that five to three. Yeah, well, we're not going to even say five.
Oh, I'm sorry.
C doesn't even apply anymore.
Right. Well, last part does, because it's just no...
It just needs to say there's no fee. But I'm not so sure that the maximum number of hives doesn't need to be its own letter item. So like, I believe that it needs to actually have its own item that just says there's a maximum of three.
So we could make it G. B?
So I'm taking that C over there.
Yeah.
Well, C still needs to be there. It just needs to say there's no registration fee, period. Because it needs to clarify that, I would think.
I agree. Okay, so C says no registration fee for permits.
Right.
No registration fee for permits. And T?
Residents are limited.
We're going to limit...
Residents are limited to up to five.
Yeah.
Three, sorry. Do you want to say each property or each property or tax lot, or do you want to say residence?
Oh, property.
Well, further in here, we're, aren't we indicating that the hives must be located on a residence? So we're limiting it to three?
But there is a, there is a section in here about a renter must...
Yes, yeah. Yeah. Well, we keep that in there because they have to have permission to have bees.
Right, because what I'm saying is it looks like an apartment complex or something like that. Who's to say that three tenants, an apartment complex, are coming out?
Well, I, that would be, it wouldn't be possible for them to have bees in an apartment complex.
It's supposed to be on the...
They follow the flight pattern and, and the management of the apartments probably would not allow that at all. Do we...
What about duplex?
Pardon?
Right.
That would be, there would be room in some places for it, because all duplexes have to be managed. So if they, if the duplex has a lot bee enough.
So you've got multiple residents.
So are we just deciding on residents versus property as the requirement?
Right, then if you go to property and you have a duplex, then you're going to end up with six hives or six property.
You mean if you said resident?
Or nine.
Or that's a duplex, yeah.
Oh, two, thank you.
Yeah, we should, should we do...
Tax lot.
Pardon? Tax lot, tax lot. Change it to tax lot.
I think so.
That was Heidi.
So G is no more than three colonies per tax lot? Is that what I'm hearing?
Yes.
Okay.
But so I have two tax lots, I can do it safe.
Me too.
Was there a minimum lot size for this?
Five thousand square feet, I can't, I don't, I don't remember, but I, somewhere I read five thousand square feet. I don't know if it's in the...
That was in the one that we got before.
In the four, right, but not this one. I'm trying to be a quick speaker.
I don't think it says in this one.
Yeah. But that would take care of...
Yeah, minimum lot, okay, so let's just say minimum lot size is five thousand square feet. You're limited to three colonies. Yeah. Minimum lot size is five thousand square feet, which means you can go up to 10,000 square feet, but you're still limited to three hives. And within the city limits, Arvon District is seven thousand square feet. And if it out, closer to the urban growth boundaries, they are larger. That if we say minimum lot size, five thousand square feet, and you're limited to three colonies.
Omega. But a comment that Laura needed to clarify, and she apologized, she can't see her tonight. But maybe, maybe Mike can actually help with this too. So there's definitions that say hive means a container or a collection of boxes for housing honeybees.
Right.
And a colony means a small colony that only contains a few thousand, no, yeah, only contains a few thousand honeybees. And a queen that is used primarily to produce new queens or workers for the purpose of starting a new colony or adding to existing colonies. So Omega wants to make sure that we're using the word colonies here. When we say no more than three colonies per tax lot instead of hives or colonies.
Okay. Let me speak a little bit, okay? We use hive and colony, can change them to beekeepers too, and that's part of the question. A nucleus is a very small starter colony that you start to be a builder, full colony. A nucleus will be just a few frames and a few bees that you put into a bigger box to become a colony. So a nucleus colony is not a full colony. It exists in a nucleus box, which really is not a hive. Because a hive is basically would house 50,000 bees. A nucleus cannot, it might have five thousand.
So let's use hive as the common thread throughout, it's just use the word hive.
So no more than three hives?
And no more than three hives.
Per tax lot, does that make, that makes sense?
Or per, minimum lot size is five thousand square feet, no more than three hives. If you're saying tax lot, there's a lot of people that have two or three tax lots. And they would end up one beekeeper with nine hives.
That's the minimum.
Can I clarify something? Because you guys were kind of hung up a little bit about the five hives and the fees and stuff. The reason is, this comes from the League of Oregon Cities. And when they wrote that, they wanted to leave it open for people like you to decide the size of the number of hives you wanted. They don't specify that. That's for you guys to decide locally. But it's put in there because the Department of Ag requires registration of five or more hives. And so they wanted that information to be in there so that you would basically, and I think it said someplace, registering the Department of Ag. And that's where the five hives and the fees come from, is all out of that.
Right.
Yeah.
So we, we're wording it the way we're wording it.
It's fine.
We're, we're limiting to three hives. Minimum lot size, five thousand square feet, which leaves it open ended for up to 10,000 square feet, but you're still limiting three hives.
Yeah, and just as a comment, we recommend new beekeepers start with two hives. You know, it's expensive, because when you're a new beekeeper, you don't know what to look for. But if you do have two hives, you can kind of compare them. And if one of them's acting entirely different than the other, then you'll have some idea what's going on.
I think, I think that when they, they're going to have to get, part of the thing for getting the permit is to complete the beekeeping, and that will be part of, I'm sure, the beekeeping classes training. Yeah, would be the suggestions for starting with, starting slow.
And in the past, I will say, we have not normally issued a letter of completion. But I talked to our board and they said, that's not a problem. As long as it's not considered to be a sanction, it's just a letter of completion.
Thank you.
Okay, and we have any other comments from those? I think we...
Just a lot of activity on my side.
Heidi?
Do we have clarification over section three than A? No, sorry, every person who owns or is in charge of one or more colonies or hives?
Hives.
Hives, okay.
Let's just say, let's keep saying hives all the way through. Hives.
I'll let Laura know that too. Consistent.
Okay, anyone?
Can you read back C and T just to make sure that you all got it correctly?
Where, where are we at now? Section three, are we made it down?
We just want to make sure we got it right.
C is potential, I think it's for collecting. Okay, so C is going to be no registration fee for permits. Then we're going down to G, and that would be the minimum lot size, five thousand square feet, no more than three hives.
Per tax lot, yeah.
Not, not per tax lot, but minimum five. Tax lots are, I have, if I, I have two tax lots.
But then what's the problem? If you have enough space, then what's the problem of having?
Well, five thousand square feet is pretty small.
Yeah, so did you, I had it as tax or...
So people that own two tax lots, like together, could have...
Six, be two.
Two on here and three on here. So is that not what you're trying to accomplish?
I would, pardon, yeah, I was thinking that we would keep it limited to three per beekeeper.
Per beekeeper, okay.
Let's do it that way, per beekeeper. That puts a sting in it, doesn't it? That's it, okay. It just fell out of my mouth.
You're not going to like this, okay? You're not going to like what I'm going to say.
What are you going to say?
Look up the definition for a colony of bees. A colony, or colony of bees refers to any hive occupied by bees. Now, if you look hive, hive is a container. Hive is not bees. Hive is a container for a colony. So you really can't say hives, because I could have some empty boxes. There are no bees in them, okay? So what you really need to say is colonies.
Okay, then we can switch to colonies.
Right.
Because I, I bow to the more knowledgeable for that.
Yeah, I did, we change on A from colonies to hives.
Well, because that was for consistency's sake, before we had the information to establish.
Right, okay, so we're just going to, and then G is going to be no more than three colonies per beekeeper. Minimum lot size, five thousand square feet.
Doesn't that get us back to the original problem where we were going resident versus property of like technically then?
Well, could I, could I...
Technically then a property manager could approve both people in a duplex, each beekeepers to have three.
Well, minimum, okay. No more than three colonies per beekeeper, minimum lot size, five thousand square feet.
But still, if I have duplexes, I could approve six beekeepers to each have three by that.
And is each duplex on five thousand square feet?
Right, so each, each beekeeper, so you have a duplex, you have two beekeepers, 10,000 square feet.
Isn't that what you're trying to avoid?
But, no.
Good point.
It's per beekeeper, 5,000 square feet.
So that means the lot size would have to be...
We have 5,000 square feet, and if you're doing two beekeepers in a duplex, it's 10,000 square feet. Heidi?
A double advocate here. But there are some larger sized apartment complexes, right? And so you could essentially have, those are on maybe an acre lot, say. And so you could have two beekeepers for sure at the apartment complexes.
So let's eliminate apartment complexes, let's just eliminate them.
Multifamily, eliminate multifamily.
Yeah, okay, multifamily housing, that's a good one. That's good, just no...
So single fam, I mean, it does require the apartment owner to sign off on it.
Right, so let's just do single family units. Well, that is for duplex. That's a good one. Oh, that's a good one.
Right, but in the literature, it describes a bee as a pet, so a lot of apartments have a no pet rule.
Yeah, okay, but let's just do it, single family homes.
Residents.
Let me just say, in 30 years I've been doing this stuff, and I never heard of the issue with apartments and stuff, because beekeepers, that's not to say that some apartments don't have beekeepers. But you guys are imagining a scenario where beekeepers are going to descend on your city. You'd be like, we have one or two or three beekeepers.
Really, truly welcome to Sheridan, but it's, no. It's, if we just keep it clarified, single family units.
From experience, I know from being a previous property manager, that tenants will push the envelope.
And so you may never have heard of beekeepers in apartments, but partly because they try and we're smart.
No, no, we do have some in apartments.
You do have?
But not like what you're actually, if we have one or two in apartments, let's say Portland, where there's lots of apartments, there might be a half a dozen in the entire city. And there'll be one beekeeper and maybe an apartment and another beekeeper six miles away or so. It's not very common, it's very difficult to manage bees in an apartment, particularly if you're on a second or third story. You know, you carry those boxes up and down the stairs, and the bee, it, it's not very practical.
Well, we'll just limit it to single family residents.
Okay, got it.
Got it?
Mm-hmm.
Three. Minimum lot size, five thousand square feet. Done. Any other?
I, I think we're through my...
Okay, so... Do you like your motion?
I'll make the motion that we approve the beekeeping, we have been discussed changes.
Do I hear a second?
Second.
All in favor? Aye. And you got it all, Heidi?
There was still one for the invite.
Pardon?
There was still one more for the invite.
You said...
I did that.
Yeah.
I'm sorry, I apologize.
Thank you.
English laughing.
Thank you. Okay, yeah. New business?
None.
None.
Scared me for a second, I was like, what?
Did you enter a report?
Uh, just, I know you always like to be brief, so I figured I'd just give an update on the tree. We had the Oregon Forestry Department out last Tuesday, and it was, it was a great meeting. They were here for a couple of hours and visited our parks that we have. A little bit of an update is, I know people were concerned about the Emerald Ash Bore, which is a little fanny beetle that's killing all of the ash trees throughout the world. It was discovered recent, about a year and a half ago, I guess, in Forest Grove, which was alarming. The Oregon Forestry Department reports to us last week that they've made really great measurements and efforts, and they believe that it's most, it should be contained to Forest Grove. But they're still going to come in and work with the city of Sheridan for a city park because of significant amount of all of the trees, a significant amount of the trees at the city park are ash trees. So if you go look at the city park and imagine what it would be like without any tall trees, any trees, that's what we're facing. So we're going to start to work towards getting a staff person that is certified to do the pesticide treatment. And it should be about $200 a treat then, compared to thousands of dollars to have them cut down and just the loss of those trees. So we're going to start to do some education around that, because people that are home, are property owners, we want you to also be able to identify if you have an ash tree at your property and to think about if you want to go to the measure, or to the lengths of trying to save it. We're also going to take a treat, well, they're going to take a treat inventory for us, which is a wonderful service too. So this is all, this is all free, you know, but they come out and do this, this is just a state department. So they're going to do a treat inventory at the park and also help us to understand what kind of new species we should be planting there. So as we put in the little guys, you know, even if there's no beetle around, we're still going to lose the trees at some point. All trees have a life. And so then that way, as we're losing the big ones, we have some, you know, smaller, medium growths behind it. So really neat stuff that are happening. We also visited the lesser known Chestermore Park, which is on the, what is that, the north side of IGA? Where it's down over there. And the, there's been a couple of groups in town, the Sheridan Fertilization Movement, this little public arts group that happened, who are growing interested with putting some statuary down there that helps as a levels into, as the river floods. So, you know, maybe there's a statue that's like the lamprey, and then that indicates that that's five feet of flooding, right? And then you move up and some other river critter, like a crawdad has been suggested, and that's at 10 feet. And then each statue has a black information, right, that goes with it and tells you the significance of that. And then they keep going up to what flood level is, and maybe has some sort of like a light attached to it so that people have the information that it's time to leave from that area.
Stand there.
Yeah. It's getting serious, right? So, so that works as for lots of reasons. The statuary are going to be beautiful. There's Siri here in town, and she, Susan is the owner. She's taken the initiative right now to be proactive, to start to design some of, some designs. And then the Sheridan Fertilization Group, they're going to help with the public outreach during the process. And we'll start off with probably six designs and have four picked. And so that's really exciting. But the reason I share that is the Oregon Forestry Department got over $22 million worth of money from the federal government for grants for the state of Oregon. And that's one of the things that we shared with them, and they were very interested in funding that. So that's very exciting news. Yeah, and that's really important too for, you know, economic development, just going into parks and checking them out, and, and for emergency management, all that kind of stuff. So that's some good stuff. They also visited the Southside Park, and we're talking about which trees we're going to plant out there, and that will be this spring, so. But we're going to also, around the park... But we're gonna also, around the pond is a, is a big piece of that, just so we, um, understand what kind of roots, you know, not to put, you know, we don't wanna intruding into the ponds and sucking up all the water. But we do wanna be able to provide more shading for the fish that are in there, so that's a big effort too. Anyways. How'd that for a word?
That's very good, I'm gonna.
Okay, I learned a lot.
Good.
I didn't know I needed to have anxiety over the bugs in Forest Grove, thanks. The bugs invading Forest Grove, yeah, they're pretty well contained, okay.
And we hope they stay there.
Yeah, it's not, they're eradicated from there. Um, does anybody have any questions for me?
Is that the beetle deaths caused from drought that goes into the trees to get the moisture?
It could be, I actually don't know the reasons behind them, they're green and they're super tiny. And that's another cool thing too, they're gonna cut out, um, who was that that's gonna come out and teach how to. Someone that they're in contact with, yeah, with O S U maybe or something. Anyways, and it's about like scraping the bark back just enough, I forget what it's called, it's like peeling the bark back with some sort of, I do this because they did this. I don't know what this means, anyways, and it's like, I in my head envisioned some sort of like a razor almost. And peel that back and then they're able to identify i- if the beetles are in there, but there's only a certain layer to map, so if you do too little, you won't see it, if you do too much, you're gonna strip it all away. And it goes from top to bottom. Yeah, and they're gonna be bring, um, we're hopeful to coordinate with the other, um, nearby cities so that they, other public works people can come over and, and like that, shave bark.
All right. All right, so we have any planning commission comments?
Don't comment. We're pretty quiet, very quiet.
That's okay.
Well, okay, so do I give your motion to adjourn?
Make the motion to adjourn.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. I know.
Okay.